I'm well, thanks Bobby.
Okay, all, I'm preparing to go live on Facebook.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the Little Miami Board Meeting for November. Roll call please.
Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Nemish?
Here.
Ms. Horvath? All right, thank you.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Wayne?
I'll second.
Tony? Roll call please.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the reading of the minutes.
I'll second.
Martin?
Was that first one Tony?
Yes, Tony.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the calendar hearing, you wanna talk about that, Mr. Power?
Yes, this is annually, we look at adopting a new academic calendar for the next school year. We're, because of our construction elements, we've delayed adopting a new academic calendar for the 2021-22 school year. And as required, under Ohio Revised Code, we will have a hearing tonight on two draft calendars. And then there needs to be a 30-day timeframe between the hearing and our recommendation for an academic calendar. So we would anticipate bringing a proposed calendar to the board for consideration at our January Board Meeting. There are two drafts, 1A and 1B. They, they're both post-Labor Day starts as a result of our construction. It doesn't look like we'll be able to get into our new additions or a new pre-K1 building prior to July 31st. And there will be some significant reconfiguration that will happen as we move to that five-building configuration. So that's the reason for a post-Labor Day start. So both calendars show the first day for students on September the 7th. The Christmas break is the same on both of them, December the 23rd through January the 3rd. The difference between 1A and 1B is spring break. Spring break is a Good Friday and Easter Monday break on April the 15th and the April the 18th. Whereas Calendar 2B is the traditional spring break that runs from April 15th through April the 22nd. On 1A, the last day for students would be May the 27th. And on 2B, the last day for students would be June the 3rd. So just basically will be what, what people's preferences are, whether they want a full spring break, or whether they wanna shorten the spring break to get out at the end of May.
The staff votes on these, right?
Yeah, the staff's been giving us some feedback on this thus far. 2B seems to be by a slight amount their preference. However, if there's anybody else that would like to give that feedback, they can send their thoughts to communicate at LMSDOH.org as a part of giving us feedback with this hearing.
All right, communications and our visitors to the board?
Yes, well, we're glad to be at Thanksgiving recess at this point in time. We, we've had really a pretty challenging fall. We, we were able to hang in there for a pretty good period of time. But as we got just past the end of first quarter, it seems like our Halloween holiday caused us to really become challenged with having students test positive and some staff test positive and increasing numbers of quarantines. The really, the darnedest thing about all of this, and I shared this data with staff last night, since the school year started, we, we've had 1,877 student quarantines and 151 staff quarantines. Since Halloween occurred, we've had 77 staff quarantines and almost 1,200 student quarantines. So, you know, just basically a little, little over three weeks since Halloween, things have really taken off, partly I think because of the change in seasons, but also I think there's been a lot of social interaction which has led to some spread. But when you look at all of this, I believe when you look at our overall report and totals on the number of students who have tested positive for COVID and the number of staff who have tested positive for COVID, we've had only 68 students test positive for COVID and 20 staff members test positive for COVID as of this past Tuesday. So those are, those are small numbers in relation to the numbers of staff and students who have been quarantined. Among our, one of our biggest challenges has actually been trying to staff for our classroom operation with these kinds of quarantines. There was a day last week where, again, high school and the junior high were operating remotely, and we just needed to staff pre-K6, and we needed 37 subs and could only come up with 17. We belong to the COG, which covers Butler County and Warren County, and typically, in a typical year, there are about 1,500 substitutes that are available for districts to utilize to cover the need for substitutes. As we began this year, the COG was down to about 900. And last week, as we were calling to try to fill our vacancies, we called 150 individuals to try to have them come in and fill those shortfalls. Only now, looks like for our area, about 200 of those 900 subs are now active. So as this, as the infection rate has picked up, it does look like our substitute pool has significantly shrunk, and I really think that's gonna be a continuing challenge, especially as we move into December and January. So that's, that's, that's the update really I wanted to share with the board. Effective, we did send notification out to parents today that effective Monday, November the 30th, all grade levels will be operating remotely, and we were able to do the preparations necessary today with our pre-K6 to ensure that we can support students at home at those grade levels. Part of the thought process would be that over this break, people are gonna be out and more social and more exposed. And typically, that, we tend to see the results of that shortly after the event. So if we are remote next week, we're hoping that if there are positive cases, that we will restrict the number of students and staff who'll end up quarantined. Obviously, we'll look towards the end of the week of November the 30th to see if that remote operation, if our remote operation should continue into the next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I guess moving on to Treasurers Reports and Financial Reports, I need a motion to accept the Bank Reconciliation Financial Investments Cash Ledger Appropriations Ledger and Receipts Ledger.
So moved.
Wayne?
I'll second.
Tony? Roll call please. Or discussion?
Yes, month ending October, of course, your monthly financial reports include the bank reconciliation with the list of our investments and bank balances, and then also an individual summary of all funds and three different budgetary reports and a revenue report for the general fund.
Any, any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to, for the approval of the five-year forecast.
I'll move.
Tony?
I'll second.
Martin? You wanna discuss this?
Yes, actually, I wanted to share my screen here, bear with me one second. Let's see if we can get this working. All right. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Fantastic, okay, this is the November 2020 submission number five-year forecast, they're due twice a year in May and now November, it used to be October. I just wanna go through and highlight some of the, the major items within the forecast here. Roll in here, this is extremely important, this is the forecast summary, if you look at this graph, this is something we've been talking about for the last couple of years, but we can really see it as we have fiscal year '25 on here now. That gold line or yellow line is our fund balance, and as you can see, we're operating at a deficit. We operated at a very slight deficit last school year, and it's growing this year up through '25, of course. Main reason being that our revenue doesn't grow as quick as our expenditures, we are a growing district. But as you can see, we go into a negative fund balance by fiscal year '25 as our balance is being diminished each year. Obviously, that'll be towards the end of fiscal year '24, going early into '25, so you're in that '23-'24 timeframe, and then going into '25. So you're eventually, you're gonna be looking at either cuts or additional operating funds at that point. But we will be almost 15 years into our current emergency levy, which was just renewed, and that is included in this forecast also. So I just wanted to point that out also. But I just wanna make, you know, clear that, yes, our fund balance is going down because it's, it's expenditures are outpacing our revenue, of course. Overall, our revenues, you can see here, this is revenue as a whole. One thing, it's hurting us a little bit, state funding, we'll get into that too, that in a minute, where we've been cut there, but it's, it's growing pretty steady overall. And we have a very stable real estate evaluation in stable, stable communities, we're looking pretty good there overall. Roll into general property tax. Between general property tax, public utilities tax, and also the, what they call property tax allocation, or it's the homestead and rollback that the state reimburses the district amounts, that makes up roughly 70% of our revenue. So obviously, it's, it's a nice stable base, which is good, very stable here in Warren County, we have a very small piece in Claremont County, but if you look at the graph here, very, very stable, which is good for us. So we were good at real estate valuation and taxes, this is the public utility personal property tax, kinda follows along the same line as the real estate tax, also very stable, which is good. We usually collect roughly 98 to, sometimes we have 100% of collections, so delinquents are very, very low. I do wanna see how that's gonna look in calendar year '21, to be honest, though. But very stable there, and then the district does not have an income tax, so we'll roll by that. Here's what I wanted to speak of here, it's unrestricted grants and aid, this is the state money that we get from, that's what they call school foundation funds. And this is where we are cut at the end of fiscal year '20, where the district was cut in May and June by 1.1 million approximately, and then that cut continued into fiscal year '21, that 1.1 million was not brought back. I'm not seeing, hopefully, we're not gonna get the full funding level till '23 is my projection at this point. At the end of this current school year, we will also be the end of a biennial budget, or biennial budget, and so there'll be a new budget coming. And so we'll have to see, we are still working off of fiscal year '19 state foundation revenue amounts. They've just kinda used that 19 amounts and went forward with it, and then, of course, we've had the cut. So it's been, it's been tough in far as state foundation goes for it. Another reason for why our revenue is growing so slowly. Restrictive grants and aid are just a very small, very small portion, as you can see, of overall revenue, mainly made up of career tech and catastrophic aid. Property tax allocation is that other part I was speaking of, that is like the 12 and a half percent, you have the 10 and the 2 and a half percent rollback and also the homestead, and this is the reimbursement amount, and it, it correlates and goes online with your property taxes. All other operating revenue, very, very small. Also, one thing I do wanna point out here, though, you can see it trending down, you may ask yourself why. Two different reasons, investment earnings are in here, interest rates have gone very, very low, as you know, it's a great time to borrow money, a terrible time to invest and save money, but it's, gotta do what we can, but if you can see, they're dropping down in two reasons, one, the lower interest rates, and two, with our available balances being available to invest, going down also, your investment earnings are gonna go down. That's the main reason that this is going down over the fiscal year. Now, scroll ahead here, other financing sources, we're not projecting any. This is expenditures overall. As you can see, this is historical from '16 through '20, and then '21 through '25 is projected. You can see, it is gradual. We're gonna go through and get into these in a little detail here. This is Personnel Services, this is where you're gonna see salaries. Within these numbers, we have a couple different items, I wanna, I do wanna state that there's no base increase after this fiscal year, that's still up to negotiation, so I just wanna make that apparent that it's zero. However, there are steps included in these, which are about 2.43% of total salary. So that's why you're seeing this, this little steps going upward here, and then for right now, and then these are still up to evaluation, but for fiscal year '22, we're projecting one certified staff and four classified staff overall, that's up for evaluation, of course, and depending on what the needs are and so on, as we get through this school year, this very weird and difficult school year. The employees' benefits, of course, is made up of STIRS and STIRS retirement, and also the major medical, our health insurance is in here, as you can see, those are climbing also, and '21, and rolling into '22 because they cover both calendar years, we have a 7 and a half percent increase in medical insurance, and then the years after that, we do have 12% projected at the moment, and that was based on historical trends that we've had in the past. Hopefully, we'll come in lower than that as we go forward, that's what's mainly driving that, and of course, the retirement goes up as salaries go fall, so that's another reason why they marry each other. And then we need to purchase services, and purchase services went down a little bit in '20, which is good, and mainly because of COVID and, and things that we really didn't need there for a little bit, as the students weren't in seat anymore. But '21, you can see, we're going back to more normal levels than what we were like back in '19, we have a little bit of growth in purchase services each year. One of the big things that's in here that I do wanna point out is that our open enrollment to public schools has been averaging around 1.3 million, and that comes right out of our state foundation money that we're talking about. The big instance this year and change was community school enrollment due to the pandemic, we went from about 580 to about 1.1 million in community school dollars going out. So that's an extra plus $500,000 that's been added to this budget for each year. Now, as we see those trends change and go the other direction, we'll, of course, change the, change the forecast appropriately, but that's, that's a big change for us, that's half a million dollars every fiscal year in here that's been added to it. So over five years, you know, you roughly have two and a half million dollar difference, and that's because we've added about 80-some additional children going to, to community schools. And I have heard of some of them, hopefully, they'll be coming back, I haven't seen anything in print as far as ODE has at this point, so, but if it does, we'll adjust that accordingly. And then Supplies Materials, of course, includes utilities, teacher supplies, resources, maintenance supplies, fuel, you name it, and, or student utilities, those are in purchase services. But yeah, just maintenance supplies, fuel, student supplies, and so on. We went down a little bit, as expected, in '20, which is good, because we weren't in seat there for a little while, but we're probably more than likely gonna return back to with the historical trend in Supplies Materials. Capital Outlay is, of course, in '18, you can see where we purchased the building, but going forward, we're pretty steady in capital outlay, depending on what we're buying, whether it's laptops, equipment, and so on, but it's been very, very stable and consistent. And then, intergovernmental debt, we don't have any, which is good. And then, other objects, very consistent there, this is like audit and treasurer fees we get from the county, different dues we have to pay and so on, it's like the properties collection fees, insurance is in there, and so on, so pretty stable there. And then the other financing uses, and this is something I'll be talking to you about here in one of my other items, this is a transfer out of the general fund going into the athletic funds, asking you to approve this evening, this projected $100,000 transfer. Main reason being is due to COVID-19, our athletic funds have taken a beating, to be quite honest, with revenue and gates and so on, I'm not doing real well, and we can't carry negative balances in those funds, so we've streamlined everything we can at this point, but we're gonna have to transfer some funds and then reevaluate it again to see where we are, and it's just, there's not much we can do about it at this point, because we don't have the gate revenue or anything like we, we used to in the past. So not something we really wanna do, but we don't really have much of a choice at this point. Overall, here is the five-year forecast, and we got our 20 right here in the first column, actual, and then we got our forecasted amounts. And like I said, the things I just wanna, you know, zoom in on here is line 6010, you can see we're operating at a deficit, it was a small deficit this past school year, and it's, and it's growing each year unfortunately, very typical for a school district unfortunately that gets in that cycle. But you can see, we arrive at fiscal year '24 with about two and a half million or so, and then we go into the negative in '25, so we're gonna have to keep an eye on that and evaluate that each year and see where we're going to, you know, stall off any type of deficit and so on. That's the five-year November, we will update this as much as needed as possible, so we can get different information, this is everything that I'm aware of and we are aware of at this point, as far as revenue goes, expenses and so on, and it's, it's a working document, you can change it as needed and as you get new information. But that is the five-year, if anybody's got any questions?
It's just that when the budgets from the governor comes in or from the legislature, we, we, this will change, I mean, it could change tomorrow, right?
Absolutely.
So this is just a working document, and
It is.
And the fact that if we get less next year, or when, when the new budget comes out, then this'll, this'll really affect us a lot, so I just want people to know that.
Absolutely, it's never in stone, and typically, we usually find out about the next two-year budget on like June 28th or 29th when they sign it, they finalize it, and it starts at July 1st, so not a whole lot of warning of where we're going, and they also have House Bill 305 in there with the fair, fair funding for schools, that would help us out a little bit on some preliminary numbers I've seen, but not by millions by any means, less than a million total in revenues, when you're talking about a $50 million or so budget, yeah, a million is great, but it doesn't, it doesn't fix everything. But yeah, this is a constant working document, never in stone, and you could literally probably change it, you could definitely change it every month, if not more, to be quite honest with you.
Right.
And House Bill 305 that Terry mentioned, it's up in, up in Columbus right now in the legislature, and there's discussion around that, there was a thought that they might pass the revision of the funding framework, certainly isn't by any, any, any means a long-term real, real fix to the funding issue in Ohio. It is an improvement, however, I was reading some stuff today where there, there seems to be some political bickering starting to happen over that. And, you know, that's one of those things where you hear, you hear and you see something positive evolving, and then at the last minute, things off times seem to come apart, so we'll have to see how that fares here in the next week or two.
Aren't we hoping that that passes by December?
Every little bit helps, and we
Absolutely.
would hope that even a little bit would be better than leaving things the way they are.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Like I said, this is a working document, it's, it's a tool for us to use as management, of course, to, you know, make sure we know where we're going in the future. I always joke that I live five years out, and I'm just worried about where we're going all the time.
Yeah, true. All right, I guess, hearing no comments or questions, I need a roll call please.
Mr. Nemish?
You're muted, Tony.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the fund transfer as Terry discussed to the athletic fund. Motion?
I'll move. I'll move.
All right, Tony and Martin, did you move?
I'll second.
All right. Discussion, I guess you already discussed it, right?
Yeah, I did have a question, Terry, regarding the athletic fund, what kinds of expenditures come out of that fund?
Athletic equipment, some uniforms have come out of there, you name it, pretty much anything you could think of, now, the coaches' salaries do not come out of there, those come out of the general fund, but pretty much everything else you could think of that's not salary-related would come out of the athletic funds.
And you mentioned that fund cannot be zero.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's negative right now, if you look at the reports, and technically, you can't, we're gonna have to transfer money, because when you go negative, you're violating a budgetary requirement for the Ohio Revised Code, and that's why we need to transfer money, and unfortunately, I don't see the situation changing as, as long as COVID-19 is around, and, you know, our gate receipts obviously are pretty much nonexistent at this point, yet we're still playing sports, which is good for the kids, but you just don't have that revenue side, but you've got the expense side still out there.
Okay.
For example, for example, our gym, which in a typical basketball season would hold anywhere from, you know, 12 to 1,500, gate-paying people, I think, I was looking at Kathy, I think she's got somewhere in the neighborhood of 160 or 70 people that'll be allowed to attend games and that will get some kind of a gate off of, it's quite a change in revenue flow.
Greg, did I see this morning that the governor either recommend, I think is a recommendation at this time that there be no, no spectators allowed at all until after the first of the year, did you see that today?
Yeah, I saw something come out on that, I've been so tied up with other stuff today, I haven't really gotten a look at the detail, but I, with 11,000-plus new cases kind of rolling a day, I know he's, he's probably gonna become more active with some restrictions around crowds.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to accept the contracts as listed.
So moved.
I'll second.
Was that Wayne?
Yes.
And Tony, yes?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Yep, just the two contracts as listed, Cincinnati Center for Autism for Educational Behavioral Services, of course, and then a contract for special needs services with Chloe Ely.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the CARES Act grant.
I'll move.
Tony?
I'll second.
Martin? Discussion?
Yeah, this is a grant from Warren County, they have additional CARES dollars to distribute to the local school districts here in Warren County, and they came up with a formula and looked at how much CARES money you received, what kind of expenses you had, and they're graciously enough to send roughly $24,000 to Little Miami.
And I would like to thank the commissioners for that.
Absolutely.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the Resolution 20-018 authorizing a master contract with Warren County Educational Service Center. Motion? Tony?
Was that Tony? Okay.
I'll second.
Martin? Discussion?
Yeah, this is just an updated agreement with our Educational Service Center in Warren County for all the aligned districts, that we use, of course, all the different site, PT, occupational therapy services, and so on with them.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Thank you. I believe that's all I, oh, no, wait, I'm sorry.
Yep, we have one more.
One more, I'm sorry.
To accept the donations as listed.
I'll move.
Martin?
A second.
Wayne? Any discussion?
Yes, we have three different donations actually here, and so grateful for, we have donation of office supplies from Stacy Railsback for use at Butlerville Primary School. We have the donation of a Samick Concert Grand Piano to the Little Miami High School by a family in the Little Miami community, quite a nice, I saw some pictures, that piano, quite a nice piano.
Beautiful.
And also a donation of cloth masks from Denise Burke for use by staff and students throughout the district, greatly appreciate all three of those.
Yes, that's, that's something to be thankful for, isn't it?
Absolutely, especially in a time like now, it's, it's been very nice.
All right, any questions or comments? Roll call please. Roll call please.
Ms. Grace?
Who?
You, Ms. Grace?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Tony?
Mr. Nemish?
Tony, I think he's frozen.
Yeah.
It's getting bad cell coverage.
Yes.
All right, I think I heard you. I think I heard a yes.
I did too.
All right.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. All right, superintendents reports and recommendations.
Thank you, I'd ask the board's approval for all personnel items listed under number one.
We need a motion?
Yes.
Was that Tony? Okay.
I'll second that.
Wayne, any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
There he is. Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'd ask the board's approval for an easement for Duke Energy to provide utility service to our new pre-K one elementary building site.
Wayne?
I'll second.
Martin, any discussion?
This is, this is, this is actually establishment of an easement for new utility service to the. To the new pre-K one building as well as a service to the current Salem building as well.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Under new business, we have the first readings of updated board policies. They were listed, so. In your spare time, take a look at those. And I guess I have the Warren County Career Center report, and I do have a report. By the way, did all of you get your OSBA journal this year, this, this month? It has a really great article on the Warren County Career Center, and if you take a chance to look at it, that would be great. At our last meeting, we had the Assistant Director of Secondary, Kendra Murphy, she's been with the district for twenty years. And the last few years, she supervised preschool, special ed and academics. We still have some open spots for grant students in our preschool. We were, the board approved licenses. M O U's and contracts. We approved resolution one 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 four dash twenty to support the fair funding plan. We accepted multiple donations toward the Veterans Day Thank You Drive. Our legislative liaison, Charles Anderson, reported on updates from the Higher Department of Education. On teacher evals and health practices and updates for the US Higher Education and Workforce Investment and Subcommittee. I also, I'm the Student Achievement Liaison. We have three students who are regional B P A officers and one student is a Regional Skills USA Officer this year, which is a high honor. Superintendent Rick Smith reported on enrollment data, and in the middle of a pandemic, we have good enrollment. He said that the Director of Marketing and Recruitment, Melissa Boggs, is working on a way to reach out to our sophomores and do a virtual recruitment. Because we usually have sophomore visitation, and of course, we can't do that, so that's what we're doing there, and that's all I have. What about public comment?
I think Emily, we have a couple of public comments for the board on non-agenda items.
Yes, we have two comments. There. Okay, our first one comes from Carson Burling. He says, good evening, thanks for picking my comment. I'm a seventh grade student at the junior high school and being online is a good thing right now. I feel that we have, we need to have all of Little Miami move to remote instruction. Because we have a big spike in cases right now and it is not going down. I feel that if we don't go remote, our staff and students will not be safe and the students and staff will be taking it home to their families. I understand that the bus drivers and others that do not have salaries will not be getting paid. But we need to stay safe and I feel that we should be going remote. After we get a vaccine, I feel that it would be safe for our staff and students to be coming back in. I hope that you understand where I'm coming from and have a good rest of your day. Thanks, Carson Burling.
And we would like to thank Carson for his comments. Thank you, Carson.
Carson's, Carson's communicated with me before. He's really, a really interesting young man. And it's really nice to see someone of that age take an interest in what's going on in the community.
I agree. Emily, what's the next one?
The next one is from J R Verrell. He says, my name is J R Verrell and I am writing with a very strong interest in coming up with an agreement or solution. For purchasing or leasing Butlerville School. My goal with Butlerville is to have an avenue for parents to bring their child for childcare latch key. And an avenue to grow my business with student mentoring with hands-on life skills, welding, mechanic, landscape, et cetera. I own a diesel repair shop and a landscaping business just down from the school. And would love to sit down and discuss in more detail about the partnership we can form to help the needs of the students and parents in the district. I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And that's J R Verrell, correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you, J R, for your comments and concern and when we have something. To talk about, we will let you know. Any other? I guess there's none other.
No ma'am, just the two.
Okay, thank you, Emily. And I guess now we need to go, we need a motion to go in executive session to confer with an attorney. For the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Will there be action, will there be any action taken? No action taken, so I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Martin?
I'll second.
Tony, roll call please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nemish?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that means that the Facebook Live is off?
One moment, please.
Okay, thank you.
Disconnect.